At this time, I call the April Commission Meeting to order. Be glad to have with us tonight Reverend Bart Gray, the pastor of the St. Paul United Methodist Church.
I'm Gray.
He's gonna give us our, I mean, Pied Grove United Methodist Church, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So Reverend Gray, we honored to have you with us, appreciate you taking time to come out. I know it's tonight, you and the sheriff go to eat, but you can make that about eight thirty. If you would, come to the podium and Commissioner Cloud will give us the pledge of allegiance immediately following the invitation.
Eternal God, we come before you this afternoon grateful for all the blessings of this day. We are grateful that we serve a God who wants to be a part of our lives each day. A God who wants us to slow down and enjoy being in His presence. Lord, we pause this afternoon for our board of commissioners meeting, and I pray for your presence to be known at this time. And as your word says, I pray for their wisdom and understanding as they make decisions that will affect the citizens of this community. I thank you for their leadership and their willingness to serve. Bless them at this time this afternoon, and I pray this in the name of Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Gray, we appreciate you coming, and you're welcome to leave if you want to. At this time, before we get into our agenda, we normally don't do this, but since it's the people that buy their ink by the barrels, I thought we would deviate just a little bit on tonight's program and let John Stone and his associate come with him. If you come up to the microphone, for those that are watching, Mr. Stone is the editor and owner of The Lincoln Journal, The McCormick Message, and The Washington Wilkes News Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it's with great pleasure tonight that I introduce you to Carolyn Amanda Smith. She goes by Amanda, never used Carolyn, I just thought I'd throw it out there on this first time. We're very fortunate to have her join the organization as our reporter for McCormick County and the Lincoln County Commission. In reference, Javon Pinkston is still with us, we've been able to move her entirely back over into Wilkes County as a Wilkes County native, so she can cover the things there better than we've had in the past. And as we're growing, we're looking to add additional people shortly. But Carolyn Amanda, excuse me, Amanda comes to us, she's a native of Georgia, Savannah. Started out as a feature writer and photographer for the Savannah Morning News, was a reporter for the Bluffton, South Carolina newspaper, and currently also works for the Abbeville Press and Banner in Abbeville as a photographer, graphic design person, and a feature writer. And she's working with us as our news reporter for McCormick and Lincoln County Commission. And we are very happy to have her, she has a Masters in Journalism from the University of Georgia, Henry W. Grady School of Journalism, where I went, I don't hold it against her. But she is very well qualified for the position with the experience in the field. I think will do a good job for this county and McCormick County also. Without that, I'd like to ask Amanda to say a word.
It's nice to be here, thank you all for having me.
Thank you, welcome aboard, we look forward to seeing you at our meetings and reading what you print about us. Hope a little bit of it'll be positive, we all know how you can be, not you, but you and John and every other reporter. But we respect you and we appreciate you, and thank you for being willing to come to Lincoln County. I know Commissioner Cloud goes to Abbeville quite often.
Amen. I buy supper one night, right, good things.
Thank you, thank you Amanda. Item four is the approval of the minutes, as thou most do approve the minutes as printed and sent to you.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankson, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda as printed and with the addition we had of Mr. Stone and Ms. Smith. Thou motion that the agenda be approved as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Cloud, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried. Then six is Department head, Office of Emergency Services Director Casey Brunner.
Chairman Commissioners, as always.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to ask to pull that microphone down, some reason I'm not, I'm not here.
Can you hear me now, Chairman?
That's a whole lot.
I'll get all up in it.
Get in that microphone.
As always, it is a pleasure to be here tonight. You have my submitted reports, and I have nothing to add unless there are questions.
Any questions to Director Brunner? If not, we accept your report as printed. Item six B is the Recreation Department Director Luttrellus Glazer, they playing tonight, or did he call it off?
They called it off like three thirty.
So no ballgames tonight?
No ballgame.
Director Ernie Dawson, you don't have to get in a hurry.
Yes, sir, thank you Chairman.
Go ahead.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, good evening, you have my written report in front of you. Do you have any questions to it?
Okay, you got it reported, any questions, Director Glazer?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cloud?
On Little League issues, Director Glazer, you know, does this need more volunteers or more help or?
It's gonna be a little more help, but we're gonna get through this season and we'll take care of everything else after this season's end.
Just gotta struggle a little bit this season.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
I think Commissioner Cloud, we'll be in discussions on that later on as the year progresses, though, before next year. I know what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Director Walton, any way to turn my monitor up a little bit, is it not? I'm asking you that for a friend, Commissioner Collins came here, I'm not having much problem. Okay, six C is Finance Department Director Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, you have my printed reports, I am not prepared to read out the cash balances because I have to change that report Chairman, so, but all my reports are in the book, if you have any questions.
Okay, any question, Director Dawson? Okay, moving right along, six D, Public Works Director Seymour.
Chairman, members of the board, you have my written reports, I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions, Director Seymour, Commissioner Cloud?
Director Seymour, I just wanted to ask you about the cell tower, the new one they put across from Albert Bentley's place. Have you heard any news on activation or?
Yes, sir, I did reach out, I had reached out previously to my contact and found out that she was no longer with the company anymore, but finally got in touch with a gentleman who's taken her position, and he emailed me Monday morning, and it looks like within the next couple of weeks that cell tower will be up and running down on two twenty.
Alright, thanks.
That's one on two twenty?
Yes, sir, down there across from Albert Bentley's place.
Is anybody else contacted for any cell tower, about maybe another one anywhere?
Yes, sir, you're gonna have probably two come up for rezoning next month.
Can you tell us, do you know where they're looking at?
Yes, sir, one is on a piece of property across from this old Ferguson property that we've already rezoned once. And then the other one is, trying to go through my mind, I can't remember right offhand, Chairman, to be honest with you. But yes, there will be two on the agenda for next month.
Hope it's in the north end.
I don't believe that it is, sir.
Okay, any other questions, Director Seymour, if not, we'll move right along, item number?
Seven.
You know, I'm still talking to Director Seymour, I'm making a comment, I really don't have to come back up here, but since we almost got a bare room tonight, which is very, very unusual for this, and having a new reporter from the general. Normally, we have public hearings and zoning issues and spoke fussing, but tonight looks pretty good. We have not had a zoning request since December, have we?
We have not, but we've got.
What in the world's happening?
Um, I can't answer that question, but we do have, we do have some for next month and the following month, so. And I misspoke, the two cell phone towers are gonna be not in May, but in June, but I do have a rezoning request coming in May as well.
You ever did come up with the other one, though?
No, sir, I might before the end of late, and I'll be thinking about it.
That comes with age.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number seven, Commissioner Cloud, young high achievers recognition.
Yes, sir, she wasn't available tonight, she had a prior commitment, we need to move that next month as an agenda if we can, please, sir.
Without objection, we ask clerk to place it on the May meeting.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight is a vehicle for the high share with the low share coming up to present it, Captain Taylor.
Chairman County Commissioners, thank you again for letting me come up here. You have in your folder a proposal to purchase a sheriff vehicle for Sheriff Paul Revere. I don't remember the last final number, I think it's like.
What'd you say?
I don't remember the number.
Forty thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, we discussed this at the work session, I think we got it, Director Dawson, is it gonna be paid out of the general fund?
Yes, sir, it's a budgeted item.
Budgeted item from the general fund, as thou most do we purchase a vehicle for Sheriff Revere.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Cloud, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried.
Thank you.
Go get it. Item number nine is E nine one one, heading three five nine eleven thirteen to call Works, Director Johnny Walton.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners?
I'll be, I won't speak in close.
Mr. Walton, did I misunderstand you, Commissioner Cloud?
About what, sir?
You said trouble just came in the door or something, what was it?
I was hoping you would keep that to ourselves.
Not sure how to follow that one. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this item will add a rail level line, three five nine one 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 three, to the dispatcher's headsets. Right now, they're having to grab a handset to answer that line, so this will be a big improvement for them, and we ask for your approval for that item.
Okay, this is an item that's previously been discussed, it's up for a vote, and I think it's twenty-eight hundred dollars to be paid for, I think, Mr. Dawson, E nine one one funds?
Yes, sir, Chairman.
Okay, we real familiar with, is that motion that we approve the purchase of this?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Commissioner Tankson, Commissioner Henderson, second, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten is a special purpose local ops and sales tax seven tier two radio project director, Casey Brunner.
Chairman Commissioners, we discussed this proposed project at length in the work session. We are looking to create a Splat seven tier two capital project to effect the replacement of effective radios as well as purchase radios for firemen who don't currently have one. So we're looking for a motion to create that tier two project for a total amount of five thousand dollars for the initial purchase of three radios. And then subsequently, as time goes on, if there are needs, they will be applied to that project.
I got a total of five thousand five hundred and forty-four, is that, is that what it is?
Yes, sir, I apologize, yes, sir.
And we, that, that will purchase, that's what we budgeted, but we actually buying three of them at this particular time and four later?
Yes, sir, Chairman.
Okay, I think we all understand this, we needed approval to purchase this from Splat seven capital five thousand five hundred pitch port office and supportable radios, thou motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, and the motion is carried. Item number eleven, FY twenty-four FTA six and fifty-three eleven grant award, Clerk McKell, pull that microphone close to you.
Yes, sir, this is the renewal of the grant for Nancy, for her transit. It is a total of a hundred and twenty thousand thirty-four dollars, of which six hundred, I mean sixty thousand three hundred and seventy-seven is federal, one hundred and twenty is state, and the county match is fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. This will be the funds to run her transit for physical year twenty-four.
Okay, we discussed this, this is a reoccurring agenda item, comes every year, whether they pay part of the cost of the transit, but she's asking that we accept the hundred and twenty thousand thirty-four, but we will have to pay a portion of that, and our portion of it is fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and that's paid from the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Chairman.
Okay, is thou motion?
I made motion to be accepted, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Cloud, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried. Item twelve is the G dot Transit Trust Fund Program Director Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, we're asking the board to authorize the chairman to sign a non-matching grant in the amount of sixty-six hundred and five dollars from GOT Transit Trust Fund, for which we would use to put in a X tier camera system at the Lincoln Center for the transit system. By non-match, Chairman, just to make sure everybody's clear, these are funds that we get, we don't have to match them with any of our funds.
Hundred percent?
Yes, sir, it's a hundred percent grant, and this will fund that entire project, that piece of that project, Chairman.
I'm showing six thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, is that what you said?
The Chairman, that's the total that we were, that's the total that we were allotted, and our project was six thousand six hundred and five dollars. So unfortunately, we're leaving a few dollars on the table, but there wasn't anything that we could put in that, in that particular project.
Okay, that's, they didn't use that much postage, I guess, since they started, take that away from it. Is thou motion that, this was discussed in the work session too, is thou motion that we accept the grant from G dot for six thousand six hundred and five dollars to be used for cameras at the Lincoln Center?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankson, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried. Item number thirteen, ACCG, Ms. Smith, you'll end up learning all this stuff, but that ACCG, we use these acronyms, that's the Association County Commissioners of Georgia. If you have any questions, though, me and the clerk will answer them for you later. ACCG workers comp audit invoice Director Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, as we discussed in the work session, after our actual payroll audit for FWA, for calendar year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, ACCG has given us an invoice this year for an additional five thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, asking the board to approve that additional expenditure for workers comp for calendar year twenty-two.
You've heard the request, five thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars additional cost of workers compensation to be paid out of the general fund, any, have a motion?
I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Cloud, second by Commissioner Tankson, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
For Commissioner Cloud?
I was gonna ask the Director Dawson, when they do an audit, no, do we sometimes get a refund back if we don't have anything workers comp wise?
Yes, sir, so this is actually not related to claims, but we do get, we do get dividends back based on claim history. This is, we had an estimated payroll for that particular year, and our payroll came in a little higher, so that's why we're getting this additional fee.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, and the motion is carried. Item fourteen, Animal Ordinance Update, second reading, Director Seymour?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Say what you wanna say, and, and, who's gonna read it? Mr. Jackson, you got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't have anything to say, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, second reading, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Section fourteen, page thirty-one, the short title, this article shall be known as the quote "Dog Control Ordinance," close quote. Section fourteen dash thirty-two, violations relating to caring for animals. A, failure to provide humane care, it shall be unlawful for the owner or custodian of any animal to refuse or fail to provide such animal humane care. Subsection B, animal suffering, it shall be unlawful for any owner or custodian of any animal to permit the animal to live in conditions that cause suffering.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd ask that we suspend the continuing reading of the ordinance. We've read it at the first reading, it's been posted on the county website for two or three months. I think it's time we call it for a vote. Without objection, we will vote on the Animal Ordinance Second Reading, is thou motion that we adopt the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we do.
Have a motion, that's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Cloud, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Captain Taylor, you have anything you wanna say? Welcome to the dog catcher business, sir. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried, we have a good time, nice, there are many people here. Item fifteen, Joint Use Facility Annual Audit Revision, Director Seymour?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is an audit that's done annually to our joint use facility, which is the water plant facility that, that we purchase water from with, under intergovernmental contract. The reason it's a little bit late this month is, I mean, this year is because we had some issues with some of the charges. We were able to work those out, and so Chairman, we ask that, it's actually two motions from your board, the first one being that, that we pay nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents to the city of Lincoln for underpayments that we made for twenty twenty-two. And then, and then the second motion would be that we would accept the new per thousand rate for twenty twenty-three of two dollars and twenty-eight cents per thousand.
Okay, before we vote on the first item, I want to thank the mayor and the city council. Well, their cooperation, as you know, we sent this back and asked them to take another look at it, and the mayor worked on it, and the original amount was twenty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars, and they reduced it by seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars to leave us a balance to pay of nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents. And this just shows cooperation between the city and the county, and we hope we'll be able to continue this kind of cooperation. On behalf of the board, I personally want to thank the mayor and city council. Is there a motion that we pay the city nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents from the water fund?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankson, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, motions carried. The second item on this is that we pay the joint use facility two dollars and twenty-eight cents per thousand gallons. That is an increase over the last year of thirteen cents.
Thirteen cents per thousand.
Thirteen cents per thousand. Alright, is thou motion?
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Cloud, that's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Nice look. Second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, signed, and the motion is carried. Okay, item sixteen, United States Postal Service. Ms. Smith, you've heard a lot of that from the postal service over on the South Carolina side. Okay, Director Seymour?
Yes, sir, what this is, is we're asking the board to approve the county to apply for a bulk permit. Currently today, we do not have a bulk permit, and this is specifically for, it's not specifically, but primarily for water bill payments. So currently today, when we send water payments out, we do a hand, a hand count of those bills and submit an invoice to our pay request to finance for them to cut a check. We take the invoice, I mean, we take the check and the bills to the post office, we post them, and sometimes our account is not exactly right, and they'll call us back and say we owe them X number of dollars. What this will do, we're paying, is it fifty-eight cents per parcel? It's fifty-five. Fifty-eight cent through the meter, yes, sir.
Yeah, fifty-eight cents, what this will do is allow us to mail our water bills at a reduced rate, I believe it's forty-six cents per parcel. So we'll get a reduction in our postage, but also, the added benefit is, is that there would be an online portal where finance would have access to be able to, when we take our bulk rate up there, they would actually post a bill to the online portal, and then finance could pay.
Seymour, what does this cost?
The cost is, I believe it's a two hundred dollar fee.
Six hundred dollars is what you're asking for approval?
Yes.
We've discussed this, is thou motion that we approve the six hundred dollars for them to be able to make the deal with the US Postal Service for the permit, and I guess that's coming from General Fund or Water Fund. Where's the payment coming from?
Chairman, I would recommend that it come out of the general fund, so we could use it for any, any of the funds.
Okay, we've paid six hundred dollars out of the general fund, is thou motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Cloud, any discussion on the motion?
I got it.
Commissioner Tankson?
Total number of mailings?
About two thousand, about two thousand a month, yes, sir.
Of water bills?
Yes.
For three, three months, we'll recoup the $600 and we'll, we'll be putting money in, back in the county's pocket.
That's correct, yes.
Good deal.
All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number seventeen, Crooked Bridge Boat Ramp Closure. This is an informational.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Director Seymour.
This will not take any action by this board. It's merely informational purposes. Uh, so as you're aware, uh, DOT is going to replace Crooked River Bridge, um, crossing Soap Creek, and, and in doing so, they're going to elevate that bridge, which is going to cause them to have to close that bridge and, and, um, retrospect, close the boat ramp at Crooked Bridge. Uh, we have, since the county is the lesee of the seven point four acres of that boat ramp, um, we're required to give DOT a letter stating that we understand that they're closing with the options that, that they have, uh, that boaters have around the area, and that's what this is, is the information, uh, for you guys to tell your constituents, but, uh, it will not be closed more than eighteen months. We don't know what that time's going to be, but it shouldn't be more than eighteen months.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde.
I just, uh, rather, you happen to know about when they've been on start and.
I believe the let date is in twenty-twenty-four.
Later twenty-twenty-four?
I believe it's letting in twenty-twenty-four. I think construction will be, um, probably mid-twenty-twenty-four, late twenty-twenty-four.
Thanks, sir.
They won't close that bridge until after twenty-four, though, will they?
They won't close the bridge until after the let date, which will be mid-twenty-twenty-four.
Major by.
Are they still going to allow through traffic on the water while they're doing that?
My understanding is yes, they will allow through, through traffic on the water, just not on the roadway.
Any other questions? I'm going to make one comment mostly for you, Ms. Smith. This is down the road another year or so, but thi- this is, this is pretty important to the people in McComber County, particularly Savannah Lakes. You come over into Lincoln County across Savannah River, first pay you road to your left, which is Georgia Highway two twenty. Probably know where I'm talking about. A lot of people from Savannah Lakes go that way to go to Augusta, so cut through over to, to Augusta Highway. Sometime twenty-four, early twenty-five, that bridge is going to be replaced, and they're going to shut the traffic down. So you're not going to be able to go that way, but that'll make you a real news story later on, so. But, but that lets you know kind of where this is too, if you want to know.
I got one more question.
Commissioner Clyde, you.
Will, will it still be crooked? I mean, is it?
Yes, sir. There's, there's, there's not much.
It's District Four, isn't it?
Oh, what are you talking about? You're saying he's crooked?
Yeah, um, um, there, there's not much way to get the curb out of it to make the road clean. So, yes, sir, it's still going to be.
Been landmarked for a long time.
Yes, sir.
But hopefully they'll bank it just a little bit.
I think they're going to bank it, and they're going to, I think they're going to elevate it about twelve foot higher than what the elevation is, and that's the clearance from, from, you know, full pool.
They're going to fix it with some boat. Big boat can get under it. I think it will. Any other questions, Director Seymour, on the bridge, two twenty? If not, moving right along. Item eighteen is, uh, gates at the recreation complex?
Yes, sir. So, um, due to, um, after our van, increase in vandalism, we've had, uh, uh, another incident here in the last thirty, forty-five days, I guess, um, happening around eleven o'clock at night or so. Um, but, uh, due to those increased, um, problems out at the rect department, what we're asking is, is that we, uh, allow to put up gates at both entrances, um, to be unlocked at, at daylight and then locked at dark unless there's an event that's going on during that time period after hours. Um, and, you know, normal operating days, we would ask the sheriff's department to make sure those are locked in the evenings. Um, of course, if there's an event out there, uh, Director Glaze will probably be out there until the end, which he would be able.
Okay, that's an informational purpose too, and, uh, Captain Taylor, you be sure to lock and unlock those gates.
When he's going to pick up dogs.
In between picking up dogs.
Okay, any questions about the gates? Item nineteen, this is almost the annual deal, and, uh, we have a big event with a bluegrass and music festival in Lincoln. Every year brings in several thousand people, stay in the motel and eat in the restaurants and spend a little money with our merchants, and we are able to use hotel motel tax to pay, pay for this, and we give a donation of, if that's what you want to call it, to, to, uh, Little Roy and Liz in the amount of $2,000 for the hotel motel tax. Is our motion?
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Tanksley.
Is that two thousand each?
Yes.
Two thousand?
This one, this motion is for Little Roy and Liz. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
Item number twenty, I'm sorry, I had that just backwards. Madam Clerk, that was Jeff and Sherry, that motion, okay?
Yes, sir.
Item twenty is Little Roy and Liz. Same thing, Little Roy and Lizzy. I just told you what they did. The following week, Jeff and Sherry has the gospel show at the same, on the same grounds as the other one. Uh, so it's a two-weekend deal of, of having people in the county for both of these music festivals. Same thing, we give Jeff and Sherry $2,000, uh, to help with the expense of advertising for this program, and they advertise nationwide. Now hotel motel tax, $2,000. Is our motion?
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-one, Library Board Department, Commissioner Henderson.
Mr. Chairman, it's known to my attention that there's a library board member that's already from my district, uh, Nikki Smith, that I just take credit for him and.
Okay, you know, we played a little, our commission district lines changed when it took effect in January. It threw a little kink in some places. We had to, to keep some people on the boards. We had to shuffle around a little bit. Um, I took, I took Mr. Smith and, and put him under my apartment. Commissioner Collins took Beth Eggs and put her under his so they could maintain the districts. Mr. Henderson realizes that now Mr. Smith no longer lives in District Two, he lives in District One, which is down here at the end of the street. District line changes. So you wanting to take Mr. Smith and put him as your appointment. Madam Clerk, that will have the same, started in January, I think, with Mr. Smith.
Yes.
So his term will remain the same. We'll don't, let's forget, we will send him a letter saying that Commissioner he's gone to him. That leaves an open position on the board that I will fill hopefully by the next meeting because we've gone three months without a full board up there. So that opens up the at-large positions that I can appoint. So now the commissioners have met their needs and appointed people, so I'll get somebody for that one. Is it any objection to that? Mr., do I need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion that, well, we got a motion. Commissioner Henderson has made a motion. Is there a second that we, uh, give Mr. Nikki Smith, District One, worded a little bit different on the library board?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
You got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Chair is done. All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Before we go into executive session, I would like to point out, and I'm doing a lot of this, Ms. Smith, for you, but, um, we have lady behind you, our director of the Lincoln County Development Authority, and the lady over here on this side, she's the extension director of the University of Georgia slash Lincoln County. Uh, that, that hands our corporate extension service and our four eight, maybe some other things. But anyway, that's who these people are. If you want to mingle with them a few minutes, this should not take long. Um, and we'll tell you what we did when we get back, but is there a motion that we go into executive session?
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tanksley, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. We go into executive session. Is there a motion that we come out of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, that we come out of executive session. Any discussion?
If I may make a statement, Mr. Chairman.
Before we vote?
I'm sorry.
You want to make a statement before we vote, or?
After the vote.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. We are out of executive session, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, pursuant to OCGA fifteen dash fourteen dash three, which cites the purposes of having an executive session, they are, among other things, involving legal negotiations, uh, potential litigation, purchase of real property and personal property, uh, leasing of the same, and discussions of any personnel, of public employees or per, public officers. The topics that were discussed fall within fifteen dash fourteen dash three, and there is a requirement that there can be no votes taken in the executive session, and there were no votes taken in the executive session.
We need a vote. Uh, you just said we don't.
No, sir.
Okay. Now we'll have a vote of what we talked about. I would ask that we, Lincoln County is the physical agent for the East Central Georgia Consortium headquartered in Thompson for nine counties. I'm asking that we, that y'all give us the approval to hire the Fulger Hagler Firm of Augusta at $400 per hour for ten dollars, I mean, for ten hours, which is $4,000, to represent Lincoln County as the physical agent, and this money will be reimbursed by East Central Georgia to the county. That's the motion. Uh, I'll ask for a motion that we do this.
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tanksley. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, well. We have a motion. We have a motion. All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson, you didn't make a vote, though.
I'm, I'm going to vote on this.
Huh?
I, I'm okay with this. I'm okay with this.
You can vote on it. Okay, so we have a unanimous vote. Okay. So. The motion has passed, and I think that, that's all the, I, I don't go into executive sessions probably fourth time in thirty years that I've gone to executive session. Is this, are we through with all the house cleaning up?
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion that we adjourned?
I made that motion.
Oh, that's quick, for quick as you ever been. Is that second?
Second.
Must be hungry. Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tanksley. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know. Saying aye. All opposed, let me know. Saying aye. Motion is carried. We stand adjourned.